Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for July 23rd, 2024. At 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And let's go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to your government, your citizens, our nation, and our God, indivisible, et liberis in death of all.
All right. Thank you and welcome to everybody here in the council chambers. And anybody who's watching online, live or recorded at another point. We try very hard to make sure that our council meetings are disseminated out there to the public, but you're always welcome to join us here in person. We'll go ahead and do our roll call vote. City Recorder, you help us with that?
Counselor Jones.
Present.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garboan.
Here.
Mayor Imokee.
Here.
Counselor Gall.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Noroff.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have the consent calendar. We did have item removed to 3.1. So will there be a motion to accept the consent calendar presented?
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
All right. Heard a first from Counselor Jones, think the second from Counselor Garboan first. Any discussion? All in favor for the consent calendar as presented? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the 3.1. That was an item that we removed from the consent calendar during the work session last night. Is there a motion for agenda item number four?
I'll make motion when approved. Traffic Committee report is presented.
I heard a first from Counselor Garboan and a second from Counselor Gall. Is there any discussion?
I wanted to discuss the traffic committee report before we vote on it to accept it.
Okay. Counselor Noroff, you may begin.
Yes, I was just wondering if these... Ken Benetti wrote a public comment that I'm hoping will be entered into the record. And it concerns the placement of the... He's requesting four-way stops be placed at the intersection on Virginia with his cross street, which I believe is Oak. And I'm wondering, I understand that we have the speed monitors now, and I think that's a great thing. They will be moved around. They are not permanent. And I would like to ask Chief Mitz, if any of those can be used to issue citations for speeding, which I think would be a more permanent... I have read about them in the newspaper and other newspapers. And I'm just curious as to whether or not that's something that we could consider.
So we feel like we're at... We have several different things here on the table. Right now, we're looking at the traffic committee report. That is the item that we're voting on right now. So I feel like these sort of comments would be separate. We have a first, we have a second. We have Counselor Noroff had her comments. Is there any more comments before we... Or any more discussion before we go to our vote?
Yes, I would like to know what the options are for this particular item that was on the traffic committee report. I don't think that's asking too much, being as we're being asked to approve the traffic committee report.
So I will go ahead and look to our city attorney and our city administrator for this, but we have a... We are in the middle of a vote right now. And we had our first, our second, and our discussion.
More discussion, please. I'm wondering, is it that I have to place this on the work session agenda to get any information from the traffic committee meeting? Is that what I have to do? Put it on the work session agenda? Or can we discuss it as we're trying to approve it and accept it? I don't think it's out of line to ask a simple question of the police chief.
Madam Mayor, as you see, number four in the traffic committee report clearly states at the end, which I know the counselor has read, because this is her agenda, it says, quote, "table until further information is known," meaning the traffic committee hasn't taken any action. So you have your traffic committee report as presented. Staff has no additional input. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had our first, we had our second, we had our discussion. Is there any more, any other questions from the counselors? All in favor of number four, which is approval of the traffic committee report? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Number five is our public comment. Do we have anybody in... We have... Do we have anybody in person here for the public comment this evening?
Not.
Okay. And is there anybody online?
There's not.
Okay. So then there would be nothing for public comment at this period?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Clarification. There is no public comment entered into the public record unless you show up to the meeting or you come in on Zoom. Those are council rules. No one can submit a document and have it included into the record. It's only what's presented to the governing body. So therefore, it's informational only, and those are your council rules. We're in accordance with your council rules. So I just wanted to make sure we clarified that. But thank you.
Thank you. All right. And if anybody wants to participate in public comment, all of that is presented on our website, and they can find the ways to participate. Number six on the agenda is the awarding of the 12th Street paving, knife river materials. We had some information on this presented to us last night. There is a suggested motion to the council on page eight.
I move that the city council award 12th Street paving project to Knife River for the amount of $42,330.
Second. Okay. Heard a first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Schultz. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor to move that the city council award the 12th Street paving project to Knife River materials in the amount of $42,330? $42,330? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number seven was any action of any resulting from executive session? We had none, so we'll move on to number eight, which is our city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mayor Counsel. Appreciate it. As the counselor said, the speed trailers have been deployed into the city. Staff will be doing some additional training on them. They have multiple security features on them. For instance, if you drive by them, you'll notice they have a boot on the tires so that someone can't just hook up to them and drive off with them. There are other security features that we won't go in and name, but there are security features there. The trailers themselves have an on and off. They actually will real-time, as patrol cars come up, they could actually download the data real-time into their systems. There is active and passive. And so, for instance, when set on active, they'll be flashing at you. When it's not flashing at you, it is collecting data. And no, they do not send tickets. They shall not be used for tickets. It is not even anything other than trying to collect data and then inform the public so that we can use the data for management purposes, on enforcement, and then also other traffic control measures. And then early in... Early next month, we'll be outfitting the patrol cars with the LPRs and then be able to roll those out as well. One question that has come up, which is sort of yes. If you fly by one of those trailers, yes, the LPR is going to capture your tag. We're going to know who you are if you're trying to set a world record driving by it. But that's a whole nother issue. But it's out there for enforcement, not ticketing. In fact, I'm not even sure that that's allowed, because under our law, I don't even think you could do that, could you?
I got one in Medford.
Yeah, they do have Medford. Yeah. Those are specific calibrated stuff. It's a whole different ballgame. Our trailers, I don't think...
Speedy.
But I may be wrong, but the bottom line is no, we're not in the ticket business. As far as some other things, questions have come up about the facade on the buildings that we've bought on Sherman. You've noticed, if you haven't saw some social media, we've started on the facade grant. We've unearthed some of the historical signage. We've checked with the state on historic conservation, things of that nature. The signage was painted, and so we're trying to bring back as much as the original incorporated. But you know, that signage, you know, will be probably covered over and used. So they're working on that. We were out there this morning. But the nice thing is, is the facade is actually being paid for through revenue that's actually being generated by our ownership. So that money keeps getting reinvested. If you're interested, go down there. You'll see how bad the facade is and a lot of the rotted wood and things. So that's all in play. Also with the old VIC, the Visitor Information Center, that's going to be tore down soon. We've already done our abatement and environmental analysis on that. We've got to decide what, if anything, we want to do with that location. I could potentially put out a request for interest and see what businesses might want to come in there, for instance, in that little area. Because once we demolish, it's a commercial lot, and I could bring that back to the URA. That's an option to you. I will be working on an RFI, Request for Interest, on the Bay Cleaners Building. As you may or may not know, Angelina's has decided not to move forward with the tortilla to the business that was going in there. So we are working through a couple opportunities, but we thought best before we do the interior renovation to put an RFI out that doesn't affect our grant. The state's well aware. I've been communicating with them. And so, but it would be nice to know what business is in there before we do the interior. We will be doing the exterior, which is the roof and the sides and the facade. But when it comes down to water, power, natural gas, things like that, you want to know what's going in there. We are making good progress on the URA's process to bring maximum indebtedness back before you. As we had mentioned last night, we anticipate that the individual levy that's on the tax bills will go away. Not the URA. Anything that says urban renewal will stay, but the actual additional levy should be gone in 2025. Aside from that, we'll go ahead and let you know that we've posted for a firefighter position, so engineer firefighter. We have one individual that will be retiring in August. We also have now posted for a community service officer and a patrol officer. Are we allowed to actually say the news yet? No. Can't tell you the news, but we're going ahead and posting, because there will be news. Okay. So yeah. And so, all good there. Now everyone's like, what the heck's that about? Certainly want to commend the staff on all of the involvement on July Jubilee. Quite a few of the department head, some of them not here, stepped up and assisted throughout that. And so, a great all-around event. Sorry for anyone that might have gotten injured, but y'all signed a waiver, so sorry. And then, last but not least, the docks, you know, I certainly want to give a huge shout out to the Parks Department, also Streets that assisted, and certainly the council and the state, because the first run of the docks are in. I thought it was funny I had to stop and capture a photo, because truck passed me as I was coming on Broadway, like, whoa, that's the rest of our docks, which is the rest of the L. And so I posted a little funny on FaceTube, as you would call it, saying there's a no wig zone that morning on Broadway, because that's what the back of the truck said on the signs, is there a... With that said, that wraps up my city administrator's report. Unless you want to take another 20 minutes?
Oh, no. We're trying to beat Larry's record, but I think you just... You blew that.
I kept looking at Larry, like, you know, I could see, like...
One question for the watching public. So the city administrator's report that we get every council meeting is published on the city administrator's page on North Bend site. When does this exactly go out? Does it... Do you not publish it until the packet or is it a few days before?
It publishes the day of the meeting, and so it went live today.
Okay.
And so, and then there's a massive email blast that goes out, but it only publishes the day. It always allows me... You all got it yesterday.
Yes.
Don't always have the luxury of getting it done. Sometimes I get late reports from, you know...
And it's our website. It's...
Yes.
The places that it goes, it's like the North Bend website page.
Yeah. So you go to northbendoregon.us/cityadministrator, but it's also linked from Nextdoor. It's also linked from Facebook. And so you can get it multiple places, and then it goes out in a mass e-blast to the council, all of the staff, all of the news media. So it gets pretty huge circulation.
Yeah, it's very detailed. For example, I just wanted to point out that the questions about the new speed trailers are actually answered in Chief Mitz's report that's contained in that administrator report. So, you know, there's lots and lots of questions people might have that are answered right here.
Yep. Good points.
Yeah. And you all got that report yesterday. And like I said, sometimes I'm ahead of myself, and so you got it a little earlier.
Yeah. All right. Well, committee reports, I don't think Counselor Gall has anything. And we have not met with the July Jubilee or the Special Events Committee to debrief yet, so we anticipate probably doing that in the next, I don't know, couple weeks or so, if not sooner. So we'll let you know when we do some debriefing about what the next steps are for next year. Council comments. Counselor Gall, we'll go ahead and start with you.
I mean, David talked about the boat ramp docks going back in the water. I think that's a great plus, timing-wise, you guys pulled it off, because the fishing activity is going to get hot and heavy here in the next three weeks, I'd say. And because of myself and Matt Hamilton and Larry Garboan, I brought up to the BASSA Board last week, and I got another $2,000 grant towards the boat ramp.
Thank you.
Then the only other thing I want to touch on is July Jubilee. I was able to do the whole cake cutting and the whole presentation at the Circle out here. And I, you know, the mayor handled herself really well. Citizen of the Year gave a nice little spiel. It was really nice, and I'm not a line walker, so I took the Citizen of the Year down to Tiny, buy him a cup of beer, and then met everybody down at the... After line walk deal at the back alley. And it was a really fun night. It really was. And then I got up fairly early there Saturday and went down to the registration on the jaunt thing and, you know, to get 60-some people to run the streets of North Bend. I thought that was pretty well-handled, too. And, you know, and then all the other functions, I thought they really went down good. I was out of town on the softball game, but I know Larry made a comment last night that it costs a lot to win that game, and I think my wife was part of that, making sure we won the game. Plus, my son was taking the money. So anyway, really nice deal, really nice effort on the part of the committee and the staff to pull this July Jubilee off. You know, it was kind of a short, short little lead time we had on it, and July came, and so did the Jubilee. So thank you.
Counselor Schultz.
I'm sad I was out of town, so I missed the July Jubilee, but I saw some things posted and it looked amazing. So it'll be good to get that information and find out kind of like, again, just more data on how that went. I am also happy about... I don't go to the boat dock, and I'm not a fisherwoman, but I'm happy that the boat dock turned around so quickly. And that is all I have.
Okay. Counselor Noroff.
I really did enjoy the softball game, and especially understanding why the score all of a sudden jumped 20 points and, you know, 20 points for North Bend and then 10 points for Coos Bay. And I'm watching the field, and then I figured it out, and I bought four runs, so that was kind of fun. I'm just disturbed that when we were talking about the Parks Master Plan, that first we were, you know, asked to make suggestions, and then, you know, we could make appointments the first thing in March, and then it went behind a curtain, and we never heard anything until I asked about it. And the mayor told we had made appointments, but no, we hadn't made appointments. And there are two pages of the council rules, and it's called a committee. It was called a committee in the staff report. It's called a committee on the website that talks about the Master Plan Steering Committee, and yet it has not been appointed to the council. We have no idea who's on there. And the road to corruption starts with suspending disbelief. Now, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not buying it. It should have been approved by the council. Everybody should have been appointed by the council. And this is long from over, because this thing's going to drag out till the end of the year. And this is the Master Plan Steering Committee for the comprehensive plan, the Parks part of the comprehensive plan. This is not small potatoes, folks. Now, you may be fine with it. I'm not. It's not by the council rules. Some of you have made your peace with it. I'm not. I'm going by the council rules, and I'm sorry, you're going to have to deal with this. It is not legit. It's not. I don't care if your city administrator takes control of it and it just happens to be, people happen to get appointed. It's not by the council rules. It is a committee. Your mayor may have made peace with it a long time ago. I'm not buying it. So you can either be, you know, if you've drunk the Kool-Aid, go for it. I've not drunk the Kool-Aid, and the council rules back me up. So just think about that.
Counselor Garboan. Counselor Hamilton.
Again, just to keep beating on it, thanks, Pat, for bringing that up at the meeting the other night for BASSA, for the fishing float there. Again, the July Jubilee was fun Friday night. Ill of wind and watching the girls hold the cake down, that was pretty funny. But it went really well. I was up early, too, down at the boardwalk. I happened to be the first one down there for some reason. But yeah, it was fun, just hanging out and talking to people and watching that. And then the run and to see the winner, the winner of it was, I don't know, what is he? 12 years old, 10 years old?
13.
13. I mean, he smoked everybody by like five minutes. I'm like, where's the guy? And a guy I worked with was in it, and he was way back there. So of course I got to harass him quite a bit. Yeah, I went down to the mall, and the mall was just packed everywhere. You couldn't get a parking spot. It was unreal. So that was, that was pretty cool, too. And then, of course, the pro softball, softball game we had there, you know? I just couldn't get her to launch up in the outfield, but it was fun. We had a great coach, and yeah, nobody got seriously injured. So I'd like to thank the staff for the weekend. It was a good time. I think it was a good thing for everybody that kind of forgot how the July Jubilee went or newcomers to the city and to the event. And I think it'll help build for next year. And I know there's some things that we want to add to it for next year, if possible. So that's all I got.
Okay. Counselor Jones.
So I just want to thank the staffers for all of their time and extra effort. And, you know, there's just a tremendous amount of work that we will never see. We have... We think we have simple requests, and they, you know, they may be simple, but time-wise and effort-wise, they tend to have a long tail. And I continue to be impressed, not only by how all of our staffers step up, but also the level of collaboration that everybody has, particularly when we're trying to pull money towards the city and using it well. It's just, it's just amazing. It's an incredible thing to watch, and I've been on some amazing teams. And this is definitely way more closer to Star Trek than anything else I've ever been on, and I'm just really impressed with all of you. I really appreciate your service.
Thank you. It was... I always appreciate you seeing how the staff comes together for the events like this and know that there are a lot of extra effort put into it, so thank you as well. And it's just a great way to celebrate North Bend's birthday. I think we remember that that's what this was about. It was just some extra festival that we had. This is North Bend's 121st birthday. It was... I really loved seeing the community participation. And like I said, we'll do a full debrief and talk about like the highlights, and we've already, you guys have already seen some of the numbers, but Counselor Hamilton was right, like the mall was packed. That was so fun to see. But to see, like Jewel Insurance, they put on that whole race. And even my dog got to run the 5K. Rosie got a medal. It was pretty special. And to see what Ponyville Mall did and how Zipply Fiber stepped up to be a sponsor for the cornhole tournament. And the Mill Casino donated the birthday cake and, you know, many more. So I'll make sure that I definitely thank every business that participated. And then the evening of the sip and stroll, you know, I went in and I'm going to have to start doing that alone, because my friends don't walk fast enough. Like, I was trying to hit like every business so I could personally thank the businesses.
27.
It was 27, and I had given thank you cards to the businesses and say, thank you for celebrating with us. And so I still have a few that I need to hand deliver, because those girls didn't walk fast enough. But one of the things that I really enjoyed was at, it was at Wakeford's Printing. They had HGE there doing, setting up to collect information about the Parks Master Plan. And I thought that was so brilliant, so I can't wait to hear that information. So it's unfortunate that Counselor Noroff keeps saying that we're not following the rules correctly, because we are. We are doing things correctly. We're getting the information. The citizens are involved. Several of the people that were on the Parks Committee were appointed to that. So I look forward to having, getting, continuing to see that process done the correct way. So, and then as far as just other things that are happening in the community, it's happy summer to everybody. I know that there's a million other things and places that people could be right now, so I always appreciate your volunteering here, because as a reminder, you are volunteers. So if you haven't yet, make sure you go down on Highway 101 and see that, those historic signs of sun bombs and the insurance. So when I came back from the Oregon Mayor's Association Conference on Sunday, it was the first thing that I did when I drove in town, so I wanted to make sure that I got to capture some of that history. So anyways, I will also just kind of note that last, literally right after the softball game ended, I left town for a hike, and then I came back and went straight to the Oregon Mayor's Association Conference. It's a great opportunity to see what the other cities are doing, collect information, bring it back. And I was so proud, because during, there was a presentation on Main Street, North Bend was referenced several times. So talk about that. I also heard from several mayors that they, a lot, I don't know if you guys realize this, but the mayors and the city managers, they all talk all the time, and people have been contacting our city administrator and our attorney to find out how we handled our time, place, and manner ordinance. And it is like noted, people are like, North Bend knows what they're doing. They have a good model. So people have said, oh, we reached out and stuff. So that was really great to hear, that people are looking at us and seeing what we're doing as like models of things that are working in the city. So thank you for that. Thank you to Main Street. It was really neat to hear like, North Bend, North Bend, North Bend. So anyways, continue to try to seek as much knowledge as I can from the other people in the community, to find out what's working from them, bring it back here, and then also share that out. So that is all I have, I think. Mr. City Administrator, am I missing anything to announce? I think that was... I think that was it.
Ross is not here, so we can't have a...
I think that's it, and no other business?
No other business.
All right. Meeting adjourned.